And we're live.
Hello, Curious Humans. How you doing on this beautiful Saturday? I hope it's as pretty where you are as it is where I am down in coastal North Carolina. We've got a stream for you today with a bunch of big announcements. Randall joining us shortly. He might be just a little bit late. Paul Shatkin's already signed in. We hope to have Kyle Allen from Egypt, I believe, is joining us and a bag of other people. These are all voluntary for the speaker. We don't know exactly who's going to pop in. We'll be joined by Kerry Joshi, who is CEO of Social House Vodka in Kentston, North Carolina, about an hour west of where I am right now. And he has done a lot to transform that town with some other entrepreneurs. And it's a wonderful, wonderful product and Kerry is going to be spot the Friday night party, which is going to be in a crazy and we're have his sponsorship and have his friendship with the summit and support of it and can't thank him enough and look forward to talking to him soon and finding out a little bit about the vodka business. And how in the world you can get in a business like that cold. How you doing, Bob Griner? Let's see.
Thank you, George.
They asked the other folks to go camera off, but Bob, you can stay in there if you like until I'm done with all this stuff. Oh, Lord. The announcements. Let's start off top. We have carefully listened to the community at the Cosmic Summit and sharpened our pencils to a fine point and have done the all the financial limbo we can do in order to bring more people to the summit and make it more accessible to people. We were getting a lot of probably well founded. You know, complaints that that's just a little bit out of my budget, whatnot. So we are announcing that we are dropping the price of a general admission pass to the Cosmic Summit to $485. So that's from 648. So it's a little bit less than $200 that we're bringing it down. And I think it'll be very helpful to the summit. We've got a pretty big facility. We want to make sure that we can use it. We can scale it correctly to the facility. And so we're going all the way down to 648, but it gets better than that. Because if you use the passcode on the website to purchase a ticket while this stream is running, you get another 50 bucks off to drop it down to 432, $432. If you go use the promo code 432 when you purchase your ticket. So just a ticket yet. Go on there right now and type in 432. And you're going to get a ticket for 432 and you're going to have a wonderful weekend. Of the most interesting people on planet Earth, along with a crowd of the most curious people on planet Earth. The current megafauna passes need to announce that we're going to upgrade all of those to Atlantean VIPs and that'll come with VIP preferred seating, priority Q and A. And here's another big announcement. First time we're saying that. All VIPs, Atlanteans and Taurids will be receiving one of these 3D printed predynastic vases. How about that? Huh? And I thank everybody, probably the people on here. Hey Kerry, how you doing, man?
I'm doing fantastic. Thanks.
Good to see you. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I was just pointing out to folks that all the VIPs Kerry are going to be receiving in addition to liquor from you, sir. Perhaps they can drink it out of this beautiful precision 3D printed predynastic vase. Used to call them jars. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Crazy story, Kerry. Man, because it's worth saying, gentleman in Florida who may be joining on with has taken it upon himself to scan these priceless purchasing them and has actually cleared the market for them world. And then he's having them scanned with high precision cloud million point scanners. And it turns out, first of all, that they're perfect in their flatness, roundness, they're perfect in their curvature to the hundred thousandth of an inch. And all made by people that had nothing but copper. Okay. 6,000 years ago, very, very hard. In fact, we've had fabrication people say that it would be quite and they would have to stand up an entirely kind of new manufacturing process being out of granite like this today. And years ago. So these are really, really cool items. What's that?
Well, I was gonna say, what you need to do is tell me how many ounces that is so I can make a cocktail that fits it perfectly.
Yeah, man. I'll make sure to wash them all too, right? And get them all nice and clean. I will figure it. And actually, the what it carries within it and also what it displaces are apparently very significant numbers too. So a whole lot is encoded in these ancient jar. So yeah, all of the megafauna are getting to Atlantean VIPs and they'll receive that jar as well. Also you'd be getting a special T-shirt made just for them. Access to the disco party and kind of hopefully about all you can drink there. And really cool. You're going to have access to preferred VIP seating, which will be right front. And what we're going to do is actually ask the speakers as well, because at any given time, you know, roughly half of the speakers are going to be audience wanting to watch the show from the front too. So we're going to have that VIP seating be with the speakers so you can get to know them and see them and whatnot. We'll also be having a reception with the speakers for the VIPs. And we hadn't quite placed that where it's going to for the Saturday band party. So we dropped the price to 485 and if you now and purchase a ticket and use the discount code 32, you'll get another $50 off to $432. Wonderful, wonderful. And this is only available until the end of the live stream. So if you're going to buy one now for $432. Oh, let's. Okay. So that's a pretty big announcement right there, but I've got, I think, one that's more fun. And that's our newest speaker and we put web and said, we've got a new speaker, take some guesses. And on the Discord, you know, our, our community channel. And there were a lot of good guesses on there and a lot of people that you'd love to have come speak. But I think somebody in there said, you know, I would be shocked if it were my guess were right. And they spelled it S C H O C H. And they were hinting there what they guessed the new speaker was and it these gentlemen, Dr. Robert Shock Boston University. And Dr. Shock is a lot of people who are listening know is a very distinguished geologist. So a fellow who for the last 30 years has done a tremendous to support some of the alternative interpretations of history and data that are the subject to the Comet Cosmic Summit, including the fact that the meds and the Sphinx may be much, much older than they are believed to be now. Brought forth in the early 90s and also the possibility of precursor civilizations that may have existed before what the Comet Research Group has proven, the tremendous cataclysm. So Dr. Robert Shock is going to be the speaker for the Cosmic Summit. He is thrilled to come. We are thrilled to have him. A scholar, he is a gentleman and actually he's extraordinarily well edged. I hadn't looked at his bio in a while, but it turns out he's got geology from Yale and also an MS, I guess, Master in Science, Master in Philosophy in geology and geophysics from Yale. He's in anthropology and geology from George Washington. That's a lot of schooling, folks. Good gosh. And not just endorsed, but actually father is, is a credit to the validity in some of what some people consider our wild speculations. I don't think they're quite that wild with folks like this backing us up. So Robert Shock is going to be coming to Greensboro. We're thrilled about that. Let's see. What else do we have as just kind of things? Oh, the hotel extended the hotel to a day before and a day after the conference. So you'll be able to get $179 rooms on Thursday night. And also Monday night, if you go day on Monday, of which there are three, and you sign up for a classroom and you want to stay in Greensboro one more night. We have it. Those hotel rooms blocked off at 179. Later, I should have said, ready, people hang in there and we're going to you know, shoot the shit minute here with Kerry and some of the speakers and whatnot. And then we're going to open it up to, to audience participation. Probably in about, I don't know, a half hour, four, five minutes, depending on things go. And we'll be taking questions and answers from anybody that jumps in there and also some of the Anunnaki, the super VIPs, if they're joining to point them out and make sure they get in a question. We'll also two comments at that time. Okay. One other announcement. Reverse direction a little bit, but we're trying to balance this thing and get it right. As you know, I'm new to it and so we've got to, as things move on to get it just right. And what we're doing with the live stream is raising the price, but I don't think too terribly. We, it's actually not raising or ending the early bird. Excuse me. We stated very clearly in the last February 16th Town Hall. And people reacted to it. I said, hey, jump on that thing now because we are going to raise the price to kind of what it's natural level. But we're going to virtually give it away after cost. I think we make $2 at $25. We're raising it to $50. So the live stream to get both Saturday and Sunday will be $50. And then on Monday room will be $35. So the early bird at $25 ended. It has now moved on to a $50 event, virtual pack 35 for the classroom. If you buy both though, if you buy classroom and or any classroom, if you buy classrooms, you're able to view all three of the classrooms. Both Randall's on in Sacred Geometry, Scott Walters on the connection between Atlantis and the Knights Templar, some of the deepest secrets of the Western tradition. And Malcolm Bendel's breakthrough technology demonstration. And we're going to have storm generator. We're going to see whether that sucker works or not. But you'll have access to all three classrooms if you buy that for $35. Now for $65, you get it all. You get all the content that's coming through. So that's going to be oh, close to 30 hours. I don't know. If you add all three classrooms, probably around 40 hours of content for $65 and stuff that's anywhere else. I guarantee you that. Okay. Moving on, I'd like my team to step in if you could. Anthony and Beck, I just wanted to introduce you two. Have y'all come on? There is Mr. Fusick. How you doing, Beckett Fusick?
I'm doing well, doing well. Happy to be here.
Yes, 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 yes. And Miss Stephanie Mark, how you doing, Steph? Yeah, doing fantastic. Beckett, as you know, kind of handles some of the technical marketing and things like that. And has just been a tremendous friend for over a year. Helping put this thing on and puts hours and hours and hours into it a week above and beyond the call of duty. And then Steph popped up. If I wasn't already blessed, super fan Steph Mark popped up. You may know her as Vala Maldoran. On the Discord, Steph, it's Vala Maldoran. Yeah. And, and she helped me out, put together a spreadsheet last her help moving forward and we got back in touch about, I don't know, about two months ago. And I just can't tell you how much help she's been. It's just incredible. She's putting hours and hours a day into it, our event. Platform C event can be kind of times and she's mastered it. And I can't, I just can't thank her enough. Huh? Kyle is in the lobby. Hey, we got Kyle. Yo, what's up, man?
Cheers, guys.
Hey.
What's up, George?
Hey, what's good to see you, man? Yeah. I'm doing great. I'm doing great. How are you guys? What time is it over there? 8:00 PM, I think?
Yep. Yeah, 8:15. We just got back to the Hyatt Regency and we're having a big
Awesome, man. And so y'all went to, I want to review you here in a minute. So hang on. Do y'all have enough time? I want to talk to Kerry Joshi here, who's the sponsor of our Saturday party. So Friday party.
We're just checking, we're just jumping in. We got about five minutes. We literally just rolled into the hotel. We're dirty. We've been crawling around pyramids all day. And we're looking forward to the Cosmic Summit, but we have to check out in the morning. We've got a special permission to go into the Sphinx enclosure and the Sphinx temple. First thing in the morning. So we're just popping in to say hi and looking forward to seeing all you guys.
Well, I appreciate it. If you got just a freak and can hang on for us. He's just sitting in Kentston up the road. He just a normal Saturday for him and you guys are under the pressure of international travel and exhausting pyramid. And I'm telling you, that is not it's an exhausting Egypt tour. Jeez, I could just imagine you probably bat crap all over you, you know, the damn spiders. I mean, yeah.
We had to, yeah, you know how it is, George.
Tell us, tell us.
You gotta wade through the mud sometimes to get to the really good sites. We had two special permissions today. No one around. There's, there's literally no one at the site because they're closed to the public and we got special access. We got in and got to explore these sites that a lot of people don't go to, but they're amazing. They have all of the hallmarks of the Pyramid Complex, which is a lot more than just a giant triangle, but the same different types of stone, salt, limestone, toural limestone, granite, conglomerate.
Yeah.
Site. And they have, you know, three pyramids in this place. And from this place you can see the Great Pyramid and the Middle Pyramid and Mucara. In the distance, you can see
Dashur.
Dashur.
Black red event.
It's amazing. Like the way these sites are positioned throughout the landscape, just on the edge of the Nile Valley where it's green and lush. And so you're, you're kind of like right on the edge of the desert. And man, there's
It's kind of a string of pearls down the Nile. It's kind of a string of pearls. You know?
Yeah.
And Abu Sir kind of sits in the middle, right? It's south of Giza. And is it north of Saqqara?
It's very close.
Yeah.
Couple miles.
All right there. Did I show you all the beautiful vases that will be gifted to all of the VIP attendees to the Cosmic Summit? How about that?
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah. Matt Bell, Matt Bell's Yeah. Pretty cool, huh? Yeah. Send the tone with them too. So where are you going tomorrow, fellas?
Tomorrow is the the special permission in the Sphinx enclosure where we can get right up to the erosion, the erosion of the of the enclosure wall itself. You can inspect the pyramid or the Sphinx. There's a tunnel leading under the Sphinx in the back, on the back, like right near the tail. You can kind of peek down in there and see it goes down. It's buried. There's, it's some interesting things there. And then from there we'll go to the Sphinx temple.
Yeah.
Which is next to the Valley Temple and has been also close to the public for
decades.
Decades.
Wow, man. I highly recommend these tours, folks. I've done it. Ben and if for folks don't know Kyle, he's part of the Snake Brothers, the Brothers of the Serpent down in Texas have a wonderful podcast. Cheers to that. And I went in 2020 on this same tour with Ben and now y'all have been what, two or three times now, Kyle? Is this your third?
Third time, yeah. Third time in Egypt.
Listen, those are long tours. They're tours that involve very, very special permissions, you know, I mean, stuff hell, we went into the was it the Red Pyramid that no one had been in since like 1958 that didn't have a PhD or wasn't with the Antiquities Authority? And we were the very first group. Now people have gone in there since, but it was amazing to be some of the very first tourists to go in the place in years. But there is special permission that you're just totally spoiled on these tours with access to sites that are not regularly visited by tourists. So I highly recommend going on those tours after you have purchased ticket at the 432 promo discount number. Just use 432 and you can get a $432 ticket right now until the end of the live stream. Little call to action. You understand Kyle. Kyle, you're also having an eclipse party, right?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
We're, we're having a little party down in Utopia, Texas. It's on the you can find the details on, if you look at contact at the cabin.com and look up the events. There's one for the eclipse. Ben's coming out. Russ is going to do a presentation as well on, you know, ancient stonework in Egypt. We've got Dave Matheson. We've got Luke Caverns. We've got some local standup comedians in the area around Texas coming out. We've got some bands, some local bands. It's going to be like a whole sort of like, like a little festival thing for a few days out there camping only. So it's, we're, we're kind of limited on the event space, but yeah, it's, it's going to be fun. Looking forward to it.
Camping only. Is there a nearby hotel if, if the tusk here comes? If I come, is there a nearby hotel?
No.
I actually have a
nearest hotel is probably an hour drive.
RV?
RV. You'd have to, you'd have to get a little RV or something.
I've actually got a friend in Utopia, Texas. Maybe they'll let me it's an interesting little story there. Yeah.
You know what? You know what? You could find some Airbnbs in Utopia and maybe
Can you?
The little tiny nearby towns.
Hey Kyle, give us the dates again. Eclipse party is and tell us where we would go to buy tickets.
I'm not in, I'm not into marketing. That's not my profession.
Yeah.
But just the dates. Yeah, I think, yeah, exactly. I just attend these things. I think the eclipse is on the 8th.
Yeah.
Thinking. He doesn't know either. I don't know. And I can't use my phone to look it up.
Oh, it's good.
It's
Yeah.
Yeah.
And
April 8th or something like that.
That's right. About three weeks away.
Yeah. So I think we start the, the event starts the day before. And there's, they're, they're predicting like tons of traffic and all this, you know, it's supposed to be just like crazy. Bruce is there. Yeah, I just saw him. Bruce. Bruce is going to be there and he's, I'm sure bringing some excellent beers, which I've never heard of.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think we, we start the day before the eclipse is when the main event kicks off. People can arrive the day before that. We're, we're going to be there then as well, just hanging out. So it's like two full days, three nights, something like that.
And where do they go to buy tickets, Kyle? Okay. Come.
Yeah. And under events, you'll see the eclipse event right there on the first page.
Okay, terrific.
Um, all right, guys. We
Hey, thank you, Kyle.
We've got to pack up.
I know it's exhausting over there, man.
Yeah, we're leaving the hotel early in the morning. By the way, you didn't mention anything about the vase, but this guy right here.
Yeah.
Is pretty much responsible for the vase project.
He definitely is responsible for the vase project. Yeah.
Scanning of the vase and analysis is began with this man next to me and we are all very grateful.
And he is and absolutely. And give us what you're going to talk about on the vases.
We'll talk about the latest excursions we have in conjunction with the Egyptian. Well, I don't want to spill everything, but we'll save some of it for, for the summit.
Yeah.
Egyptologists and engineers, including audio engineers, mechanics, engineers that are now getting involved. And so we're taking this whole next level and beyond, including the museums here and elsewhere. So pretty optimistic. And what we've seen is that the response is positive from everyone.
That is fantastic. We can't see, can't wait to hear you speak. And I'm glad you're over there getting a taste of Egypt, man. You'd kind of, is that your first trip to Egypt?
No, I've been here a few times. First time
Oh, have you? Yeah. It's been I'm in it. Yeah.
We had a police escort today. So yes.
At one time I counted, we had 28 cops with guns with us. But it, yeah, it was during the pandemic though, and and I don't think they had anything else to do because we were the only tourists in the entire, in the entire country. Okay, fellas. Hey, thanks for sticking your head in. I appreciate it, fellas. Yeah, y'all are good friends of the summit. Tell everybody else for me and tell them I love them. Okay? Take care. Okay. See you. I'll see you in Utopia. Bye.
I don't know how to turn this thing.
All right. Hey, Randall, we can't see you, man. And that's half the fun. Huh? Randall Carlson, come in. Not there. Beckett Fusick, turn your camera on so I can see what you're up to. And let's shift over to Kerry Joshi. How you doing, Kerry? Yeah.
Joining this conversation already.
Ah, thank you, buddy. I'll tell you what I'm going to be enjoying shortly. Some of this.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
There you go. Thanks for that. First vase, social house vodka cocktail being made on Town Hall number three.
Hell, yeah.
Yes.
Hey, might have to walk over and get a little mixer, but I might take a little snort of it. Oh, Lord. Oh, gosh. Hey, Mark Young, how you doing, buddy? I hate to surprise people on things.
Yeah, I'm doing good, George. How about yourself?
Fine. I'm doing fine. Getting a bad reverb. Everybody else here in that?
Yes.
Hmm. Hmm. Mark, I might limit my speaking to you. I guess you've got your thing off, but Mark is a PhD candidate in Australia who joined us at last year's Cosmic Summit. And he was inspired by the Joe Rogan program with Graham and Randall to become an archaeologist. And he is working on his PhD now at Flinders University and also a member of the Comet Research. And he's going to be giving another presentation at June at the Cosmic Summit. We've also got Bob Griner on and Bob Griner is an expert in ancient geography and its connection to exotic technologies of the past. Apps are near future. Is that fair, Bob?
It's very fair. And I can say what's happened in the last 48 hours is absolutely earth shattering. In the Bing Huang samples that I received, analyzed them over the last couple of days. And I think the conclusive evidence of what causes transmutation in these systems has been found. It is the sacred geometry structure. And anyone that has eyes to see will know that that is true when they look at this evidence. It's literally a real finding.
And when are you premiering that evidence? A notification came up earlier.
Yeah. So firstly, today in one hour after this call, we'll be revealing the carbon dating evidence of the inside of the outside of the 24 inch sphere from Malcolm Bendel's thunderstorm generator. And probably I will then later in the day share the the live SEM session of this sample from Taiwan. And within, I would like people to guess what they're seeing because it, it took me until late last night, California time to map the sacred geometry onto the key structures. And I made another breakthrough this morning, but it's absolutely phenomenal. And this is how it works. And I think it will be obvious to anyone.
That is amazing, Bob. We called you in an exciting time.
Matter. Yeah.
Yeah. Bob heads up the Martin Fleischman Memorial Project and he is a hands on physics researcher, if you will. He doesn't talk about anything that unlike a lot of us, a lot of us are kind of armchair scientists, but Bob doesn't talk about anything that he can't see, make or touch. So everything he speculates about is based on hard evidence that he is finding through various means and various experimentation. And you're in California now. You flew all the way from Czechoslovakia to California in order to do this, didn't you, Bob?
Yeah, I've been spending the week on this scanning electron microscope here in
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been spending the week on this, uh, scanning electron microscope here in, uh, Alan Goldwater's, uh, magic sound lag here in Santa Cruz. And every time I come here, uh, it's a real pleasure. We make huge, huge progress. So a huge thank, uh, to, uh, Alan Goldwater, uh, for letting me use his microscope. Um, but thi- this is totally profound. It, it's, it's another one of those moments in this story that has totally shocked me as the researcher. Um, because it, it, it implies that Lord Kelvin was right. It implies that, uh, Winston Bostic was right. Uh, that these magnetic hydrodynamic structure is the basis of all life in the universe.
That's, uh, pretty serious stuff, Bob. And I don't doubt you at all. Bob and I. This year in Zurich and in India, and I was already impressed with his channel, Martin Fleish Memorial Project. Been watching it for years. Then I've gotten to know him. Um, I told him the other night, he's now my, kinda my guru, right?
This is the biggest data yet. This is the, and I might be able to pull it together for 2,200 CET, uh, tomorrow, but it's totally consistent story. And it does explain why we have the faces we have.
Okay. Well, listen, we're gonna get a little bit more from you. I'm sorry. I got a little bit, uh, oh, there's Randy Daniel of the Comet Research Group coming in, but I'm gonna switch to Kerry Joshy. Kerry. Social House Vodka. Well, let me say just first off that it, it's Eastern North Carolina is where it's headquartered and Eastern North Carolina. Is based on a, was based on a tobacco economy. So you can kind of imagine where things for Eastern North Carolina. And it's still full of wonderful, talented, well-educated, fantastic people, but some of its core industries and its original kinda purpose for being kinda got kicked out of, from under it, um, you know, 30 and 40 years ago, but it's coming back and it's because of entrepreneurs and. Like Kerry's that, um, that the, the small towns, particularly this town, Kinston, is really getting a nice new shine to it. And Kerry could have made that vodka anywhere he wanted, but he made it down in Kinston, North Carolina. It was North Carolina's very first vodka distillery. And it has gone, it has become wildly popular across the state and is very recognizable in the state. We wanna introduce it to people elsewhere. So Kerry, give us a little bit about your own story and, um, and how Social House started.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, actually, uh, one other little bit of history about Kinston that.
Yeah.
Be a little less, a little lesser known, but no less notorious, uh, is that Kinston has had the longest running red light history in the country.
Really?
Sugar Hill. Yes. Ever since the Civil War, Sugar Hill has been here.
I didn't know that.
Has been a venture for a lot of people. Yes. A lot of, uh, um, a lot of wonderful stories about the history of Kinston. It went through till about the seventies when the, uh, when the military, uh, banned the, the people from on leave going to Sugar Hill. So. Yeah.
And it's being such a conservative and almost religious town, you know, is originally from Kinston. My, um, grandfather was from Kinston. And they were all ministers and very, very faithful people. And I think of it as. Town, but you're saying they had prostitutes walking the streets of that small town?
In that little area and that, and if you dig deep enough, you also find that James Brown funk comes from Kinston.
Ah, okay, man. Yeah.
They're still around here in the area playing and local places all around town. Yeah. Kinston's actually quite colorful place and, uh, one of the main reasons we're here. Uh, is, is the water. Actually, on a, on a little, little bit of a fluke and a lot of luck. Uh, when I was introduced to Kinston, uh, through a creepy Facebook story, um, I ended up going by an old power plant and, um, the city manager had shown it to us and, and, um, they were gonna tear it down. So we were very fortunate to, to stop that from happening. But out back was a big concrete structure and, uh, what I had learned, much like, uh, some of the folks here. Are traveling through Egypt, but from the geologists at NC State that there is a gigantic aquifer. That feeds that concrete structure, the reservoir, million gallon reservoir for three deep water wells. And it takes over 10,000 years for the water to go through this rock and it's naturally pure out of the ground behind us. And of course vodka being 60% water, uh, we were very fortunate to have that and contributes to the sort of the smooth taste of our vodka.
Kerry, let me stop you right there for a second because that, I found it interesting from your website. You're describing, y'all have got a, a tremendous, uh, uh, little speakeasy. Right? Called the pump house? Yeah.
That's right.
And, uh, from the. Built in 1906 to draw water from the deep wells of the Black Creek Aquifer that is naturally purified over the last 10,000 years. Well, you know, the 10,000 year range is pretty special to this crowd. That's when we believe. Yeah, we believe there was a tremendous catastrophe and that it, uh, may have wiped out a, a precursor civilization. So your vodka started preparing itself for us right around the end of the younger Dryas, right?
That's what it sounds like.
Uh huh. And it's end, ending that long, long journey right here.
That's right.
Ah, this is gonna get rough. Um, tell us about starting Social House. How do you start a vodka distillery?
Well, it, it actually started, um, much like, uh, it looks like how the cosmic, uh, summit started, which is.
Yeah.
A group of, a group of friends gathering on a dinner table and joining each other's company.
Awesome, man.
Sharing joys and passions about what we do and just trying to figure out how to replicate that. So. From that discussion, it started my journey to 37 distilleries, of course, for professional research only.
Yeah.
To Ireland and abroad and.
Why is it recording?
To discover, you know, what the business was about. And, and it's really fascinating, uh, as you dig into it. Um, how all these different types of spirits we consume are, are, are made. Um, social, uh, is obviously, um, the name was brought from connecting with our friends in Greenland.
Yeah.
House came from a, a trip to Ireland where traditional Irish pubs are sort of the communal hubs.
Yeah.
Those cities and towns where everyone sort of recreates that, uh, sense of gathering and connection.
Yeah.
So pubs are of course called public houses. So that's where Social House came. And, uh, we've been very blessed. Uh, and starting out, we very quickly became the top selling vodka in the area. And then I came after more research, we, uh, at NC State again, in that great agricultural school, we chemically analyzed 25 different vodkas.
Yeah.
Before Emily let us determining and coming up with our formula.
Yeah.
Which has, uh, been wonderful.
I tell you, it's, it's got a special taste to it and I'm, I'm, I'm drinking right now and I don't day drink. And, uh, you'll probably see why in an hour or two, but it's got a, it's got a kind of a sweet flavor to it.
You know? It does. Yeah. And that comes from the corn. Um.
Yeah.
A lot of people think that vodka is potato based.
Yeah.
And that's a, a lot from its origins in Poland and Russia where it's first made. And but typically vodka is produced from whatever local crops are grown that are close and relatively inexpensive.
Yeah.
Today's only about 3% of vodka is made from potato. Most of it's made from grain.
Yeah.
Wheat, rye, uh, but you can make it out of quinoa or watermelon or anything that has sugar.
Tastes, huh?
And it's, um, we, but we went ahead with the corn. Uh, we've got a local farmer 11 miles away that produces our corn for us. So we're really happy with that relationship.
Are they down in Pink Hill? Is it south of town?
Actually in Seven Springs nearby.
Yeah, in Seven Springs. Not exactly where it is. Man, that's fantastic. So we're gonna have a cocktail. We're gonna have the Cosmic Politum. Okay. Uh, but it's not gonna be like it's, uh, nearly named sister. We're gonna do something a little special. We'll be revealing the secret recipe. Uh, at the Cosmic Summit, but, uh, Kerry is gonna be providing, um, the booze for the Friday in the, uh, the discotheque, the fifth season there at the Sheraton Four Seasons Greensboro. And, uh, it's a, it's a really special facility. We had a coordination call with the hotel the other day and. North Carolina's pretty conservative state with regard to alcohol regulations and we're gonna dance right through those and make sure we observe all of them carefully. And, uh, and still have a, a big, big time. And I think a lot of it will be, uh, rather inexpensive to free vodka. So it should be an interesting night. If that's not your thing, of course, we'll have other best. And, uh, we hope to have maybe a little live entertainment. We'll see that. But that's Friday night. And then of course Saturday night, we have a band party. Kerry, uh, how is your marketing going? Boosting your profile. You're working on, uh, big. And are you getting out of state? How's things going?
I had a, it was, you know.
Yeah, we've been, uh, just everything was so easy. Very blessed. And actually this year will be the first, we've been in business for now seven years and.
Yeah.
Longest time focused on North Carolina. But, uh, with some relationships and partnerships with NIL collectives. We plan to expand to six new states. So Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, New Jersey, Wisconsin, Colorado. We're excited. It's, it's gonna be a big year for us this year.
Well, we'll, yeah. Go, go ahead. I was just saying, we'll have people from all of those states and we'll send them home with us. Some experience with the brand. Yeah.
Yeah. The thing that we've partnered with the NIL collectives, which I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with that, but it's, it's been a longstanding debate on whether or not college students should get. Some of the benefit that their universities enjoy from their participation in student athletics. And, um, during the COVID.
Yeah.
U, UNC sent, sent, and Chapel Hill sent all the students home except the football players.
Okay.
Question was why aren't the football players? Well, there's a sizable TV contract for football.
Mm hmm.
That they needed the players to play. So if that was kinda the straw, the broken camel's back. Said, listen, to start compensating these players. So. To keep the separation from professional athletes in, in college students amateurs in college. They allowed these NIL collectives. So name, image and likeness, because you can't pay a player to play, otherwise they're a pro. So you can pay them for their name, image and likeness. So we've partnered with these companies. So at NC State, the Savage Wolves. Uh, the Battles End at Florida State. The Roll the Quad at Tech Forest, the Techway at Georgia Tech. And we've co-branded, we're gonna have co-branded bottles. So every time you purchase a bottle, 10% of the proceeds go back to the student athletes, uh, at those specific universities.
That's terrific, man. That's exciting. I wish you well. I think, uh, your ambitions will be fulfilled and, um, I don't know. A lot to Eastern North Carolina and, uh, our community here and you're bringing a lot to the community of the Cosmic Summit, dude. And I really appreciate it, man.
We hope so. Maybe the next cosmic relation will happen on the dance floor.
Yeah, damn right, man. Sounds like, uh, Bob Griner's got some for us. Good gosh. Well, Kerry, you're welcome to hang on, man, and just listen to some of this stuff or you might have other stuff to do on a Saturday. This might not be your subject. But, uh, we love. Uh, look forward to seeing you in June and hopefully before. I'm gonna get by the distillery sometime in the next month or so. And I'd, I'd love to have lunch with you and all of that and see the place.
Well, I look forward to it. Thank you again for having us. And we look forward to the summit coming up.
Hey, thank you, Kerry.
I know.
Hey, uh, folks, I had one subject. That's probably the most important subject to the Cosmic Summit or to the study, these greater studies. Um, the most important development in, uh, several, uh, arguably of all time. You might say, well, what? What window of it? There was a 6,000 word article in the New York Times about the younger Dryas boundary hypothesis, one of the central themes. Of our conference. And that was just two or three weeks ago. And it was in the New York Times Magazine and was the feature. And again, it was 6,000 words. I mean, it's a 40 read about our obscure subject. And I look forward to hearing from the audience when we get to y'all in a, um, short while, uh, what you thought of that article, whether you've read it yet. And how you think it affects things, but really think that this is moving mainstream. The fact is the younger Dryas event. Is the most significant. Earth event in human history. It's the most important thing that ever happened. And I, when we first, uh, we're gonna publish the paper in 2007 and we've got another member of the Comet Research Group that's joined us, Randy Daniel. Look forward to hearing from him with the. When the Comet Research Group first gets, got started, you could fit us all into a car. Five or six people. And of course I was just a fanboy, but you know, got, got to go along for the ride. So you know, you had a half dozen people in on this. And now 1,000 words in the New York Times. And to have seen that progression over time. That we were on to something that was very, very important and that had forgotten and was fundamental to our past. And to see it grow. Into longers in the New York Times is, you know, it's incredibly gratifying. Be gratifying to all of us because we're at the cutting edge of this understanding, of understanding how we really got here. Why did we settle down into civilizations? Why did we? Animals and growing crops. All of that, as Dr. Moore told us last year, appears to be a result of the impact. You think it would be on the tip of every school kid's, right? Or that we would at least have generally some knowledge about it in our society and our culture and educational institutions, but, but we really don't. It's only just begun. And thank goodness to people like Randall Carlson and, and Joe Rogan and other people who've publicized this. It's kinda becoming a mainstream thing. How are you doing, Dr. Daniel? It's good to see.
Thank you. Thank you, George. I'm doing well.
Yes. Uh, Randy Daniels, an archaeologist and anthropologist? Randy, excuse me.
I'm an archaeologist in the Department of Anthropology.
That's what it is.
Yeah. Speaking of East Carolina, you were talking about Kinston. I'm just a stone's throw from Kinston, right?
You sure are. You're right up the, right up the road in Greenville, North Carolina. And how long have you been at ECU?
Uh, almost 30 years, 28, 29 years. Yeah. Yeah.
And what was the first? End with the Cosmic Re- Comet Research Group? Was it, were you on the 2000? Did you come in a little bit later?
I think it was a little later. Um.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I came in as a result of, uh, really my former student, Chris Moore. You know, he's been the, um, kinda vanguard of the YD impact, right? Looking at the, uh, the archaeological evidence of the sort of signatures for that. And, um, he, um, he, he alerted me to, uh, this is like when he was a student, uh, we were digging along, um, the Tar River here, main, the main drainage in Eastern North Carolina, look, looking at some stratified sites that span, we now know. Say, you know, 12,000, 13,000 years ago, up until a couple of thousand years ago, had serious stratified off occupations. And, um, he had heard about Allen West and some of, um, the work in, uh, the spherules and, uh, that, um, were then considered signatures of this, right?
Mm hmm.
And, um, he said, look, why don't we, we've got, we've probably got, you know, there's a maximum in archaeology to find old sites. You gotta find old dirt, right? And so we, we had some old dirt in these sort of dune-like ridges along the Tar River. And he said, let's send some of these samples out to, uh, Allen, see if he could find some, um, spherules or other evidence in there. And so. I can remember sitting in my office one afternoon and Chris forwarded me this email and he said, look at these. And there was this, um, a, a slide with the several of those spherules in it. And I go, hmm, what the hell am I gonna do now? Right? And so, um, so here we are, you know, a couple of decades later, uh, and, uh, Chris is, um, now we got to the platinum anomaly, anomalies and other, uh, signatures. We believe that are present at, uh, some of the sites along the Tar River.
Man, that is fantastic. Did any of your samples make it all the way to Mark in Australia? Do you know? I just think that's so cool that it'd be found.
I, um, I don't know that. I, I don't think so, but, uh, I, I can't be certain. You know, Chris has kinda been taking the lead on that.
That's right. And Chris Moore is the. Uh, a director of the Comet Research Group and is, uh, fully devoted full-time to the research now that we have received a grant. Announced in the New York Times article, or not a grant, but a donation of, uh, one point, yeah, 1.3 million dollars. Um, was donated by, um, uh, Mr. Eugene Jeong from Cal. Um, who also funded the Galileo project. Project in Harvard. He kicked that off with a million dollars. And looking for, you know, to fund other things that he was interested in and get open-minded research. And he made a donation of 1.2 million or $3 million, I forget which, uh, to the Comet Research Group about a year and a half ago. And I haven't mentioned that or even. Done it or any of that, uh, because I just wasn't sure whether it was public. There hadn't been an announcement yet. I'm not gonna be the first to blow the whistle on that, but it's been in the New York Times now. So you. But the Comet Research Group was pretty good at working, uh, with a very thin budget. And it's always gonna be a thin budget, but at least we got some runway now. You know, 1.2 million goes a long way with our crowd. That buys a whole lot of transmission electron micro. Uh, it's able to, uh, to employ Chris at the. Kinda where he's doing his work. The money went to that school. And, and he's able to spend his time researching and writing on this subject. And, and he's able to spend his time researching and writing on this subject. And that's why um, we had four new papers this year and a blockbuster from him about his research at Wakala Springs, Florida, Randy. Uh, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but could you tell us about that paper? His most recent paper? You're familiar with it? I could make an attempt if you want to.
Yeah, well, um, yeah, Wakala Springs is located in the Panhandle, the state of Florida. And as, as the term implies, it's a noted spring. And of course, the Panhandle's riddled with sinkholes. Uh, and along the, around these sinkholes, of course, they were attractive areas for occupation and Wakala Springs been known, the archaeological sites around there have been known for some time. Uh, but Chris went in there with some of his colleagues, Jim Dunbar and others, and did some sort of examinations and particularly getting a column sample down in the, in the lower levels, again, looking for some of these signatures, these younger dry as impact signatures. And uh, what he found, why, and they have a series of OSL dates and so forth. And so uh, he found again, so I think it was a platinum spike at, at the, at the date that's consistent with the Younger Dryas. And so what he proposes is that this that the, the Younger Dryas is kind of can be a stratigraphic marker across sites akin to the, you know, you talk about the black mat, right? And so the black mat is, is not is not prevalent, particularly in the eastern US, right? We don't have a, a signature that you can visually see stratigraphically like the black, black mat, but maybe, maybe these is a proxy or is a substitute for the black mat, this, this platinum anomaly and, and mostly deep sand sites where visible stratigraphy is not easily seen, but with fine fine interval soil samples, right, looking for these chemical or other signatures, then that can be kind of teased out. And so he proposes that that the, these younger Dryas's can be a a marker akin to the black mat, although here in the eastern US.
Yeah, and I've actually thought of a way to get at that, too. I think the state archaeology office, when they're asking you to do surveys and it comes from a paleo period, they should hire the permittee to test for that platinum to see where it comes up. And if I wasn't so involved in this, that'd probably be another project I'd be working on and talking. See if we can get that going. I talked to Chris about it because what it allows spike in platinum, it's another way of knowing that something been dating and, and knowing that it's 13,000, they call it a chronostrophographic like marker. So you've got, you know, otherwise if it's just sand, you don't um, you, you can't date it, you know, you've got to have a lot of confidence in the carbon materials that you find there and that they weren't bioturbated. Otherwise that they stayed where they're exactly that age. So that it's always good to have another tool in the toolbox and testing for that elevate and finding that spike would let you know you're at 13,000 years ago. And of course, that platinum came from above. The reason why it is enriched is that there was a, a, a series of catastrophic impacts, probably about six hours long, thousands and thousands of them, and each of those pieces had extraterrestrial abundances of platinum, and they would have left that platinum signature behind us to find today. Uh, might open it up for some questions if, and, and I saw in the chat my thing was up a little bit and people were, I was being a little too and other people were maybe a little bit quiet. So it sounds like I got it right now. Um, if anybody wants to ask Dr. Daniel, who is a paleo archaeologist, want any questions, just put them in the chat and I'm going to shoot them to him. Uh, we're gonna open each here in a few minutes for people. Hey, Paul Shatsken, we did a foxhole today, man. That was pretty fun, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was a good time. Hi, George. Hi, everybody.
Yeah, yeah. And wrote a, a book, my favorite book of the year on my favorite subject of the year. And you know, we were we mix a little bit of UFOs in this stuff and Bob is kind of a sidecar to the UFO story, but it's a great North Carolina part. I read the book. I just couldn't believe that they did very significant anti-gravity research in North Carolina uh, right outside of and actually all over the country as well. Paul, tell us about those people. Tell us about your book, um, The Man Who Mastered Gravity.
Well, The Man Who Mastered Gravity is the book I released just about this time last year, uh, after actually having worked on it for 20 years with a 13-year Brown's reputation is that he discovered electrical effect, which some people consider to be, to have anti-gravity qualities or to have the
He may be cutting out for other people, but it will go on to the record.
I'm cutting out?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of coming in and out. Keep talking, though, if it stays like
Okay, um, well, yeah, the levels. Okay. There, there was a period in the mid 50s when anti-gravity research, for lack of a better term, um, gained gains, gained some profile in, in the press. There were stories about how anti-gravity was being developed by aerospace companies. And then it all simply vanished. And, um, notable in Hal Putinoff has said that it's either because there is nothing there or because it all went deeply black. And, and that's because the Townsend Brown was very much involved in what may have been deeply cloaked, highly classified military research in the realm of gravity control. And, uh, some of the research that you're talking about, there was a conference in Chapel Hill, North Carolina in 1956, I believe. And, and that is an interesting term in science history. And also did quite a bit of work in North Carolina with a man named Agnew Bonson, who was one of the sponsors of the Gravity Research Conference in North Carolina. So that's, that's kind of the North Carolina connection. And I got involved in the story myself back in about 2003. Uh, worked on it for about six years, really found it. There was very little information about Townsend Brown. He's a very mysterious person. And as, as one of my sources said, all, all the records you would expect to find Townsend Brown, all those records had been quote sheep dipped. Which is, which is a term in the, the intelligence community for all the records were There's a couple of stories in the book about the experiences that I had trying, sending FOIA requests and going to the That's a thumbnail sketch.
And, and I'd like to point out
Am I coming through okay? Cause, cause I've been thinking.
Yeah.
And I've pulled up and I've got sitting on my screen here, a video I'd like to share with folks, which is going to be kind of the, the opening remarks of the, the talk I hope to give at the at the conference.
At the Cosmic, yeah, please.
Am I coming through at all?
Yeah, yeah.
Everything's frozen. George looks frozen. Everybody else looks frozen. Oh, well.
The, uh, the Nashville, uh, internet is not working. Hey, Paul, we can see you, man. Play the video.
I'm back.
Hey, Beckett, can't hear you, man.
Beckett, help us out here.
Yeah, Paul, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, you're coming through. You're blasting through. Yeah.
All right, I'll turn that down just a little bit.
Okay, that's, that, yeah, we, we, you know, we adjusted all the levels here. So.
So you go ahead. Can you go ahead and play your screen, Paul? If you have it pulled up there?
Well, he's getting it up, because were you able to get in touch with Randall? I think he was having a little tech trouble.
I have been trying to secure Randall's phone number. If you could send it over to me to help him out.
I'd say, oh, but he's got some crazy fans out there. Calling him, your ideas late at night. Can you get it, Paul?
Go ahead and text me that, George.
Yeah, it's coming your way.
All right, well, I, I, I would need to leave, apparently leave the, uh, the the screen. So I guess we'll come back to that later, so.
If you won't drop out in a minute. We'll just move on. People are a little concerned.
I feel like, I feel like I'm in a Verizon commercial. Can you hear me now?
Well, Griner, and we've got Randall, Randy Daniel, pretty good. Now, Randy, I know you're probably shocked hearing anti-gravity stuff. We, we uh, you know, rational reason. I promise you, there's something to this. And it North Carol just like your own back in the 50s. There was a huge push and a belief that we could crack the sea to gravity. And it made national headlines and it was all the sun geeks were into it. And then it all just kind of went poof. And, yeah.
George, turn up your mic volume a little bit. Sorry to interrupt there, but turn up your mic.
Yeah, Randy.
Well, I, I try to stay in my lane. So gravity, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that to all the other uh, uh, gravity moonwalker experts, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've got two or three people kind of concerned with this part. Bob Griner's another one. So we're a little bit on it today, but believe me, it'll be mostly ancient civilizations and your kind of stuff. I hope you'll enjoy the conference as well as enjoy presenting at it. Um, are you able to come with your wife for both attend and be in the audience?
Yeah, we plan to do that. Yes, we do, George. I, and I, I want to say I appreciate you reaching out to me, um, to do this. I, I was a little uh, I was pleasantly surprised to get your email about this, you know, and so, um, so, um, you know, I, I, somewhat ambivalent about this, as I, as we talked about, but I think it's important to kind of reach out. I'm a big believer in public education, public education, public outreach.
Paul, hit me.
Okay, all right. We okay? Okay, so anyway, so I, I do appreciate you reaching out. Yeah, I'm gonna be talking about Clovis. I think that's a term that most of your attendees will be familiar with, right? And so I'm gonna talk about Clovis, North Carolina, the evidence for that primarily in the form of these collections of artifacts, Clovis points I've been looking at, and then talk about the, the end of Clovis and talk about the evidence we found, um, not of Clovis occupations per se, but some of the the platinum and other signatures that we've, we've got along the Tar River that relates to that.
For people, there might be some people that don't know what Clovis is, particularly those watching it recorded later. Um, tell us what, who the Clovis people were and what role they play in ancient history. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Most of them do know. Yeah.
Yeah, Clovis, um, gets the type site is Clovis, New Mexico, where this distinctive uh, archaeological, uh, assemblage was first uncovered back in the 1930s. It's a the Clovis Point is, um, um, essentially a spear point, say three to five inches long, lance-like in shape. And it's particularly diagnostic for what's called a fluke, which is a, um, a, a large flake or a series of flakes that are removed from the base up, uh, towards the tip, maybe a third, uh, a quarter of the way up the length of the point that's there's, you know, there's some, um, debate about the, the purpose of that, but generally it's, if you, if you believe in sort of functional utilitarian interpretations, it's probably a used to thin the base to facilitate the halting of that point onto an end of a, of a spear or dart, right? And so the interesting thing about this artifact is that it's found in all the lower 48 states, um, with some variation, but it's, it's a, it's a widespread marker for the, um, this is where the debate about Clovis versus pre-Clovis comes in, but I think it's fair to say that Clovis points are the best evidence for the first widespread occupation of humans in North America. Now, there are, of course, many, um, sites in the past few years that have been proposed to predate the Clovis, when Clovis, of course, is around 13,000. You know, depends upon the chronology, but let's just round it up 13, 5, 13, 4 to maybe 12, 9, something like that. And of course, that, that date, uh, is also consistent with the, the Younger Dryas. The end of the Clovis period, right, is also marked by the Younger Dryas impact. And so, um, so that, that, um, the, the presence of Clovis points are, like I said, found all over North America and that's what I've been looking at for the past several years, looking at, um, private collections for Clovis points. I've collected some 375 points. I've been recording and photographing those and I've published some intermittent uh, reports, updates on that over the years with some colleagues, including Chris Moore out in Goodyear. And, uh, so right now, though, we've got 375 points, and I think it's time to do some kind of a final synthesis on that, which is I'm in the middle of doing right now. Been writing on that this week. And that's, um, I'm feverishly working to get that done by, uh, the, the summit. And that's what I'll be presenting at the summit.
I think it looks Ah, that's awesome, man. Thank you for us in mind, you know, we'd love to have anything that's, you know, fresh out of the oven. Be fantastic. Hey, Randall Carlson, how you do, man?
Good. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I sure can.
And you can see me?
And I can see you, man. Can you hear me?
Can you feel me?
I can feel you, see you and hear you, brother.
Okay, this was a little bit of an effort. I, okay, we got a couple of guys got the joke, but okay.
But I was nervous for you. I was sitting there stressing in absentia for you. I was like, oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Working on this for 45 minutes. What was going on?
Oh, well, see, uh, you can't see, but behind me, we did a few, uh, well, let's see, last week, we I did a, I did my first in-house interview. So we switched the default cameras to the cameras that are over my conference table you see behind me. And I think that was, yeah, I, I, to tell you the truth, I don't know. We, we just got John Arthur Fiallo, you know, remember John Arthur, right? Yeah, so he just walked us through it and yeah, we had to run everything through the mixer and the ATM.
Hey, Randall, we were just talking here with Dr. Randy Daniel, Eastern Carolina, University of East Carolina, and he, um, was professor, I suppose, right? Where
Oh, okay.
Did you oversee his dissertation and all of that? I forget the proper terms, but
Yeah, both, he was both a master student and a PhD student, uh, at ECU. And yeah, and so I worked with him on both those projects.
And how did he first come to you with the hypothesis? Were y'all already working on the sites and then?
Yeah, we were working on, we were digging, um, we were digging along the Tar River, which I, I mentioned is one of the major drainages in the coastal plain here in northeastern North Carolina. And, uh, we were digging in these series of sites that are in stratified sandridges, aeolian dunes, right? Not unlike, you know, similar geological features across the landscape, all up and down the coastal plain. Uh, and these are wind-blown sand, accumulation of wind-blown some flood deposits that occurred along with the formation of the major rivers, the, the Tar, the Noose, the, uh, all the way Savannah Rivers, um, Altamahall, all up and down the coastal plain, these northeast uh, southwest trending rivers that grain into, uh, the Atlantic, uh, have these ridge dune-like ridge formations along them. And they were formed at the end of the last ice age. A lot of wind-blown sand coming across what prior to the entrenched channels, they were braid plains, right? There's a series of braid plains, creating a lot of sandy exposures, which ultimately were blown up and incrementally up over several thousand years. So that's, that's the geological context for having uh, uh, these 13,000-year-old, um, layers in them. these 13,000-year-old layers in them. And so we were digging there, and as I mentioned earlier, Chris had been reading about, this is, I think, in the late 90s, when the first, this impact was just brand new, right, brand new. And he had, he had reached out to Alan West, and Chris came to me and said, you know, we ought to send him some soil samples from what we believe to be the 13,000-year-old level at Barber Creek. That's the name of the site. It's a creek that has a tributary of the Tar River. And so we sent off some samples. And then, as I mentioned, one day I was sitting in my office, and Chris sent me this email. They forwarded an email he had from Alan, and in it were those spirals. You know, the spirals then were the, were the initial proxy signature for the YD impact, right? And so I looked at that and said, hmm, what the hell am I going to do now, you know? And so, so we, you know, we continued excavate these sites, and Chris kind of took this on as a major research project, and, you know, part now, it's, you know, the platinum, he's got, you know, there's several signatures, right, that are believed to be manifestations of this, of the impact. And so right now, that's that platinum anomaly. We just talked about with Cola Springs, right? And so we have platinum anomaly at Barber Creek and Squires Ridge to another side up, up the river from where we're working. So I think East Carolina, eastern part of Carolina will have many of these such signatures in those sediments of the right age.
Awesome, man. I've got some questions, but I'm going to do two things. One, I'm going to turn it over. Beckett, if you could bring people in from Riverside who want to join the stage, how does that work?
Yeah, go ahead, whoever is.
Yeah.
For sure. So whoever's in the audience here in the chat, there is a button on your screen that allows you to request a call-in. I'm going to drop another chat, another link in the chat here for you to be able to request a call-in, and we will accept you as these come in here. So George, you can just keep rolling along, and these requests will build up with questions, and I'll let them in as, as the questions come in.
And everybody that, for the duration of this podcast, if you go purchase a ticket and type 432N, you'll get a reduced price counted from the new price of $4.85. And be going on here for, I don't know, what do we got? Maybe 30 minutes or so we'll be talking, depends on how those questions go. I'm sure people have some questions for Dr. Daniel and Randall. But it's kind of a, I hate to say it, it sounds so corny, but a limited time offer. Isn't that what they call that? So limited time offer, use 432 when you buy a ticket, and you're going to be coming in for, for not much, for not much, as little as we can charge it, and as many people as we can in June. So if anybody.
So, hey, George?
Yeah, Paul?
Am I coming through now?
You are.
Yeah. Okay, great. So before we, let me see if I can get this to work. Before we, we go to the, the questions from the, from the, from the crowd, I want to see if I can.
Right at that moment. Yeah. It just blinked for a second. Keep trying. I might have to have another.
Window?
Here.
All right, here we go. Is anybody seeing a black screen?
We are.
Yes.
Okay, here we go. We're going back to the future. Stand by. Now watch where he goes with this. There it is, Mr. Fusion.
He, Mr. Fusion? I love it, Paul. About the coincidence of that naming?
I will, yeah, as soon as it's over.
Yeah. Sound, though. Paul, can you hear it on your end?
So you weren't getting any sound?
Yeah, we're not getting sound, pal. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's something else I got to figure out, I guess. I'll stop the screen share.
Nah.
Sure.
I'm going to drop it into the more info. Sorry, man.
So there, there are three, there are three things in that video that I'll be talking about at the Cosmic Summit. The first is that when, when Doc Brown comes back from the future, the, the DeLorean is no longer powered by plutonium. It is powered by Mr. Fusion. And I'm going to talk about somebody who explored fusion research in the 1950s and 60s. So that's the first glimpse of the future. The other glimpse of the future is that what, what enables the time travel in the DeLorean is the flux capacitor. And the subject of my second book, The Man Who Basted Gravity.
They just don't want us to know it.
Yep. So we've got, we've got few. We've got a flux capacitor, and the, the real interesting thing to me is that the character in the movie, his name is Emmett Brown. The subject of my book is T. Townsend Brown, and the man in the movie is Emmett TT Brown. So I really think somebody is trying to tell us something. I just don't know if we're ready to get the message, but that's what I'll be talking about.
Amen, brother.
So for my, for my next trick, I will figure out how to, how to deliver audio from a streamed strip on, on YouTube through FireSign.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So we've got our first guest jumping in here. Joe, can you, you see us here? There you are.
I see you. I don't know if you can hear me, though.
We can hear you.
Joe, we got you, man. How you doing, buddy?
Fantastic. All right. Great to see you all.
You, Joe?
I'm based out of Toronto, Canada.
Oh, terrific, man. To have you here.
Thank you.
Joe, go ahead and repeat your question here, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, a question I had is, you know, for myself, and I'm, I'm sure this is a characteristic of all the viewers and listeners. You've got a lot of laypersons, you've got a lot of engineers, technologists, who are probably fans of these topics, as I'm sure we all are. For myself, background in aerospace engineering from Rikers University, currently working in research and development in the automotive field. And I don't see a clear condensed path to engage on engineering support, research and development, analysis of data, et cetera, to provide value to this community. And I'm curious what your thoughts are and how to really bring that together, especially from a remote setting with, with everybody being able to engage worldwide.
Hmm, you testing in more the advanced power generation, kind of the stuff that Bob's talking about, and to some extent, Paul?
Well, that represents one hypothesis, or, or, you know, or positive and kind of, but in general, there's so much potential technology that we're just not aware of, as, as you all know.
Yeah.
And it, it begs to cross-pollinate ideas and in a value-added way from technologists, laypersons as well, but mostly people who are in the fields that are pushing the boundaries of technology in, in today's world, looking at what we have of information from, you know, previous worlds or previous epochs.
Well,
Not limited to that.
Yeah, one will be to get in touch with Bob Grin. Do you have technological paths or approaches that should be investigated by some of our leading lights? Do you have ideas yourself or things that could be illuminated?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I've been developing motor technologies, pushing the boundaries of electromagnetic devices for automotive, but I can only imagine what happens in the, in the kind of the blue sky research domain of, you know, defense contractors, et cetera. That's, that's not publicized, right? And, and, and this goes for any company worldwide. I mean, you've got so much, so many people putting so much effort in the dark, really, unbeknownst to most of the population on technologies, but what we see in, in the ancient world is just fantastic levels of precision, very under, under-evaluated kind of, you know, details that, that haven't been looked at from certain disciplines of study, cer- certain fields of study. It's just not, it's not cross-pollinating enough, in my opinion.
Can I take a hash and an answer there?
Yeah.
So, so basically, our research for the Martin Fleischman Memorial Project has led us down to a path that there is a sacred geometry structure, which is in all ancient technology and all ancient iconography. And that this produces a flux capacitor, specifically a magnetic flux capacitor, that some have calculated goes to 50 million tesla. And that this forms these iron-rich crenulated microspheres. And we have published several different technologies, one of which you can experiment from the age of three years old with about a $35 budget and a seven minutes of your precious time. And you need to know the skills of pressing a button, folding aluminium foil, and pouring water from a jug into a vessel. And you'll be able to do this. It helps to have a scanning electron microscope to prove it to yourself. But there are ways forward to know this implicitly about how it works, and also to connect it back to, for instance, the real function, in my view, of the Great Pyramid of Giza.
Yeah, so something like that is phenomenal, that I don't think has enough exposure, and, and that goes for most of the, the guests here and the, the persons here, is that we need to have very easy, straightforward access, marketability of that to the layperson, to the general public. Has to have a huge focus on that to be able to engage. That sounds fantastic, and I'm going to look into it, if you don't mind just repeating the.
Specifically, Joe, if you go to the Martin Fleischman Memorial Project's YouTube channel, and you look at all presentations going back to 2017 with the subtitle, "O Day," so you can search "O Day," "O-Dash-Day." And if you walk from the, the earliest through to the, the, the last, don't try and do it in reverse, because you need to learn it step by step. And I'm going to probably do another O Day presentation tomorrow that will absolutely nail this to the wall, that it is like this is. And it's all based on hard physical evidence observed from multiple experimentalists around the world. And in short, it is charge separation, or at least polarization, with extreme hydrodynamic shear. And that is present in a comet impact. It is present in an ultrasound system. It is present in a plasma system. And the net result is a structure which is perfect. It always forms that exact structure. There's no debate about whether it's any different. And it does do both disassembly and assembly of matter. It is also a means of propulsion.
And Joe, keep in mind that if you come to the summit, this isn't kind of the formal public forum. Maybe you're speaking. The speakers are going to be around all weekend. You know, you'll have time to meet these off times, you know, have a cup of coffee with them kind of stuff, you know?
Yeah, no, I was, I was present live on the, the inaugural event. It just wasn't feasible for me to visit. Unfortunately, I'd love to visit sometime. I've set up for the live event this time as well, and unfortunately, I would have loved to be in person, but what Mr. Bob here, or Mr. Greer, is, Grunier, is describing is fantastic. This represents, in my, in my view, one pillar, you know, one path that, you know, persons such as yourself and your team are, are developing, proving out, fleshing out those concepts. They have to be, they have to be very well communicated to, and as you mentioned, you've got the channel, we'll look through it. But essentially, things of that nature, being able to develop those concepts, have to be available for all to provide value on. I, I don't see that there's a clear, clear path to that yet. And, and what you're doing sounds fantastic.
We, we have a policy of one to many, and no one gets a private audience. And, but it's accessible to all, including the raw data.
Very well.
Yeah, it's interesting. So Bob has some kind of breaking news that he's hinting at, that's going to go on a live stream he's doing soon from his forensic research out in California of the material off of the thunderstorm generator.
So two, two points, actually. It's from two different systems. One, we've done a carbon dating of the carbon from the inside of the 24-inch sphere from the eight-year experiment that ran for about 500 hours in Melbourne. And I think it's going to have profound implications for carbon dating as a process. It is the same structure that does whatever you're going to observe in a two hours' time. And secondly, the system that I was just referring to, the cavitation system of Binjun Huang, which also produces these iron-rich crenulated microspheres, as we found in the thunderstorm generator. It's basically nailed the sacred geometry as the means by which this technology operates. It's totally conclusive. It's, it'll just be a matter of people looking at it, and they'll realize that's what it is.
Hey, Mark Young, are you still there? I know you're on, but it's also got Australia.
Yeah, I'm here, George.
Hey, man. Way, I mean, it's really weird that kind of Bob's work and what I call old fusion, maybe something that powered the VOD, Zeus's thunderbolt and all of that, that there might have been a, a technology before that somehow we've lost. So that's what kind of brings this into the mix. After it was brought into the mix as a subject with the summit, they discovered microspherules, right? As of the reactions occurring inside this sphere. You've spent two or three years under TEMs, looking at microspherules under TEMs. Do you think, I mean, how can we, are they, are they characteristic if Bob shared some of his spirals, spirals with you? In simplistic sense. Could you tell whether they're? I mean, he's got the same kind of samples you have, and you're in completely different field.
Yeah, if I looked at them under the microscope, I could definitely tell if they're related or formed in the same process.
Really?
Yeah.
You want to try to pull that off, Bob?
This, in this latest sample from Binjun Huang, I just need to run a magnet through it, and I took a subset of that sample here, and we probably got about 20, 30, ranging from the low micron up to over 100 micron iron-rich crenulated microspheres. And most specifically, we found one that was cracked, and we saw the internal contents, which is a collection of toroids of different elements, all the elements in your body, and in the center, it has another iron-rich microsphere. So it's, it's a torus with a sphere in the center, and that ends up being inside an iron-rich crenulated microsphere. It's worlds within worlds.
That, that would be very different to what we see, but.
Well, we, you typically produce spheres, but when you look at the outside, they are, this, this, they, they can either be smooth, depending on what size. What are the sizes that you're looking at?
Uh, anywhere from like 15 micron up to 150 micron.
Yeah, that is, that is the kind of range, but we, we see them down to around about one, two micron, where they don't present the, the crenelations. But when.
Yeah, when they're that small, you can't even see the crenelations, really.
Yes, the crenelations. Yeah, the actual crenelations are about between one and one and a half microns, always, on whatever scale it is. But as you get bigger, some, some of them end up having these, they almost look like, how shall I put it? They look like fish scales, or, or actually more like, like a crocodile skin a bit, you know what I mean?
Yeah, interesting.
With a vertical nature.
Yeah, I'd love to see some images.
Yeah, well, you can already see a lot in various presentations in O Day, but you can also, like I say, I'm going to be publishing a whole load of raw data at my blog, remotview ICU.
That's absolutely fascinating, Bob.
And maybe we can get you some samples from Binjun Huang's cavitator. I know he's got a lot more. He only gave me a subset. I said, can I have a sample of the, some sample of the material? And in the back of my head, I'm going, I wonder if that's got iron-rich crenulated microspheres. And he says, yes, I've already prepared you one, but he's got a lot more material. So like, if you give me your address, then I'll see if he can send you a subset of that material. Then it's not been through me. It's come from the same source, and you can see and have at it.
Yeah, that sounds great.
That's fantastic. Yeah, it just, again, but you can just kind of, kind of, from my perspective, you bring in these two different bodies of thought, and they both end up using very, very similar evidence from the lowest scales possible, you know, it just, I don't know. Maybe they're related, maybe they're not, but it's a hell of a damn coincidence. And it kind of gets to Robert Schock, who's going to be joining us, our newest. And it kind of gets to Robert Schock, who's gonna be joining us, our newest speaker. He believes that this was an interaction with the sun, right? And those plumes of plasma, et cetera, from the sun, maybe that does produce spherules in the same way that Bob's seen it inside a machine that has plasma interactions. Who knows? Hey, Beckett, did we get a question from the email there? Yeah.
Yeah, we, we sure do. We have a question for you, Randall, from a guy on YouTube named Colby Richter. And his question is if you have done any research on the Tin Bider Crater as a possible Atlantis location.
What crater?
It's called the, in the chat, it's the Tin Bider Crater. And I guess this can be directed at anybody in here.
No, I have not. Okay. How do you spell that?
T-I-N-B-I-D-E-R. Yeah, and I believe it's in Algeria.
Uh-huh.
And.
Yeah, it rings a bell.
He says it's similar to the Reshot Structure in his message.
Okay. I think I know what he's talking about here now. I think I've, yeah, I got, in fact, yeah, I'm pretty sure. It's, it's actually in alignment with the Reshot Structure, I believe. Let's see, no, that's, let's see, maybe it is. Let's see, I, I think I have researched this crater. But I didn't think that it was, had anything to do with Atlantis. I mean, it's, uh, yeah, I think it's dated at seventy million years old. So, you know, I, I'm, you know, very quickly, my take on Atlantis is that it, it has to be a sunken landmass in the mid-Atlantic or otherwise Plato just made it up. So, the question is, is there such a thing in the, in the mid-Atlantic? And it does look like there was possibly some, some sidings during the last, at the end of the last Ice Age with the rapid sea level rise along the mid-Atlantic ridge. I mean, there's empirical data that suggests that there were, the Azores microcontinent has probably has subsided, but that's a whole nother question where I don't think we need to get off on that. Now, I may address that during the, during the Cosmic Summit. But I did do, I did a lecture, well, it was over nine hours long on this issue. So, I don't think we have that much time right now, do we?
Well, we do on Monday. You've got a classroom. So, you can.
Okay.
Plenty of time.
Well, it's all recorded.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We've got a question here from Bruce. He said, perhaps the Cosmic Summit should have a YouTube site that is updated weekly with layman-level videos of the technologies and recent speculations. Perhaps in an after-school type of. Well, if any of y'all are familiar with Martin's work on after-school, I can't. So, it's not going to be anything like Martin's work. Because he is a fantastic artist. Can we do something like that? We're gonna have to grow some. You know, our bandwidth is maxed out. Just putting this conference on, staying abreast of the research is just tough. I tell you, and I was warned against it, not warned against it, but I was warned that conference sponsorship, hosting, whatever, putting on a conference is time-intensive. And I just, and I took everybody at their word. But I had no idea. I just, amazes me that to get five hundred people or so in a room over a couple of days that spend ten hours a day, every damn day for six months. I mean, it's just, I'm not bitching about it. I love every moment of it. But I tell you, we, we're maxed out now. Things grow. This thing has only gotten larger, more sophisticated, democratized the information. I think we'll get to that kind of stuff where we're able to make, I know that, you know, Beckett could certainly assist in that and we'll think about it. Of videos that take it all down to a very, you know, basic level. Johanna James does. She talks about complex matters, but has a tremendous making it kind of popular consumption material.
Yeah, and for anybody in the audience who's watching, we'd love it if you send us videos that you like. If you are watching a video that's been helpful to you, jump in our Discord, send us an email. We appreciate the, the content that you share with us. It allows us to make better content on our social media accounts. And if you guys want to contribute to our social media, this is a place for us to be able to share these things at scale. So, please, share them. Give us your feedback. Give us your insight. We want to hear from you.
Beckett, quick comment, and George, and in response to that question from YouTube, what comes to mind is the, the media of today that's engaging with the largest sect of the population is short-form content, whether that's through TikTok, Instagram, Reels, Facebook Stories, you name it. And I've seen tremendous, I go through cycles of deleting all my social media and then having to come back onto it, et cetera. It's wasting my time, delete it. But what you notice is that there's fantastic content in short form, even on technologies, even on, I mean, you know, making sour dough bread, you name it. But like, if you stick to technologies, there's fantastic short reels, great engaging music, quick snap, snapshot kind of view of what they're talking about. It might be worthwhile to engage with folks who show a track record of developing that kind of content and putting out, putting it out there and bringing them in the fold and saying, hey, this is the corpus of what we have for, for this week. Put that into some kind of short. And then you have accumulation of those on, on your channel, et cetera, on your platform, you know?
Well, well, Joe, you might have been off the channel, but Instagram and stuff, we put out three videos a day.
Yeah, I gotta catch up. I gotta catch up.
Yeah, 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 no, it's fine. And, and we're still perfecting it, but it's amazing. Three videos a day, every single day. And I just wanted to point out, just let me, let me break, there have been some new people that have tuned in. If you're interested in buying it, you're not gonna find a better time to do it than today and right now through this podcast, maybe a few minutes afterwards, just in case people are so engrossed to switch over to buy a ticket. But if you go to the Cosmic Summit website, register and purchase a ticket and use the discount code four you'll pay only four hundred and thirty-two dollars for the ticket, which is more than two hundred dollars off. Also, I would remind everybody that the all Megafauna passes have been upgraded to VI. And that's gonna be a sweet little package for those folks and they'll have a great time. What you got there?
Yeah, so we got two things to get through real quick. Joe, to, to respond to what you said there, you, you might have read our mind a little bit about engaging with other creators who are making short-form content. Because we've been in touch with a group of people on Instagram and TikTok who spend, we like to think, spend all their time watching content and making short-form videos that we're gonna be working with to continue to promote the summit and use some of their content. That's the first thing. And then the next thing is we got another question that's been sitting in the chat that I told them we'd get to next. The Daily Outside asked a question on our YouTube livestream. And the question is if anybody on this call has experience at the Anzig Clovis site in Montana?
Randy, what do you know about the Anzig site? Isn't that where they found a body? There's, there are not many Clovis bodies in Atlantis. Yeah. But, hold on, you're, you're muted, Randy. You're muted. Randall, am I right about that? Is that where they found?
Yes, I think it was a teenage girl, body of a teenage girl.
Yeah.
Was that where?
There you go, there you go.
Okay, yeah. All right, sorry about that. I'm technologically challenged too. Anzig site is in Montana. It was a Clovis site, a burial. They found two children, the remains of two children. This is on, it's kind of a long story. It's back in the six, seventies, late sixties. It was found accidentally by some mining for sand or dirt, some backhoe work and uncovered some bones in red ochre and over a hundred Clovis artifacts, mostly stone tools, bone rods. So, it was, it was kept by the family. This, this collection of materials kept by the family, then shown to professionals. It was reported on over the years. And then ultimately, Sarah Anzig, one of the, who was a child at the time that this was discovered, went on to be, today she's in genetics, in paleogenetics. And she was one of the team that, Urske Wilerslov over in Denmark, who does the ancient DNA. They retrieved some ancient DNA from Anzig, some mitochondrial DNA. And this is, it was dated to write it about twelve-nine, I believe, twelve-eight. And so, these, these burials of young kids and with this red ochre and these, it's, it's amazing the number of Clovis points, large bifaces and these rods, I think it was elk antler that these were produced from. And so, the, the DNA came back to the mitochondrial DNA with the, one of the founding hapla groups of Native Americans that can be traced back to this ancient DNA.
Just quickly.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
The, the, the one that Randall was thinking about, I believe it would be Nia, N-I-A-H, Nia, the teenage girl that they found that's.
That was in Mesoamerica.
Yes, yes.
Where, where, where was that again? So, I get that straight?
It was in the Mesoamerica in a cave. It was underwater. Some divers found her. She was, yeah, a teenager, right, right.
I know of one other Clovis burial. And I think that makes them all, right, Randy? There are not many. Have you ever heard of Brazoria woman? Brazoria woman? That's a very obscure one. I'll stop on that.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with that, no.
Yeah.
But Anzig may be, Anzig may be the only Clovis burial that we've got really. That, that's, you know, both the date and the context, despite the circumstances by which it was recovered. It wasn't professionally excavated, right? But now it's curated, the, the Anzig family. And it was ultimately repatriated a few years ago to a group of the local community Native Americans who buried the bones in a special ceremony in an unknown location. So.
It will, what, or perhaps just one confirmed. I mean, that's kind of a mystery in itself, is that you find a lot of Clovis artifacts, or not a whole lot, but at least they're nationwide and you know, have been found in dozens and dozens in every state at least. And no bodies, burials, bones.
Well, preservation may be the key factor here, right? Of skeletons that age, they're just unlikely to be preserved. And so, there may be, so that, that it's just gonna, had organic remains, just don't preserve. And so, instead, we have the stone artifacts. And so, and it, it may be to, you know, kind of looking in the right places. We don't, maybe we're not looking in the right places for finding where there's cemeteries. We don't know, you know, were, were Clovis burials in formal cemeteries or isolated burials? That, you know, that, that's a question we, we, we just don't have the answer to. And so, we don't know where to look because we just, we just don't know where to look yet. So, it's gonna have to be maybe some other accidental discoveries on the nature of Anzig that will provide us some idea of where to go looking for these.
Fantastic. Hey, we've got Charles has come on to the Do you want to unmute your mic? And I think you have a question, sir.
Sure, yeah, I'm sorry. Hope I did that right, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. No, this is a question for Dr. Daniel. I'm currently calling in from, from Costa Rica and I was curious, kind of, is there a similar, is there a Clovis artifact in Latin America or South America that is, that is similar or similar cultural indicator? That, that, that has, shows a similar, like, collapse or kind of disappearing or like, what is the southern limit? Like, how far south?
Yeah, Clovis, the Clovis points, the fluted diagnostic projectile point, the southernmost goes down into northern Mexico, this, you know, the, the Mexico. There are other Lancelots that are eared base, have more of an eared base. They are unfluted. They're like Swanee points in Florida. I don't know. And so, so the question is, what, what are they, you know, are they equivalent to Clovis? Are they post-Clovis? Dennis, hell, Dennis Stanford argues they were pre-Clovis at one point. So, so Costa Rica, I, I, I'm not sure there's Clovis points per se, but that doesn't mean there weren't people down there thirteen thousand years ago. I, I'm, I'm not as up on the Mesoamerica as I am more North America with that.
All good, just curious. Thank you.
And younger dryas event all the way down into Chile, Charles.
Oh, okay.
But there's a great paper on that and it's, the name will pop to me in just a moment. But if you got any other questions, please shoot them, man. We got Randall back on. He can answer anything you got.
Sure, I'll, 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 I'm just curious, kind of for, I guess, on the kind of plasmoid or, or kind of Bendel tech stuff is, as, I think you guys have done, like, I guess, conferences, events in Europe. I, I think if I remember correctly, I heard India. Or has anything been done in, in Latin America or do you have any plans to do so in the future?
You know, Malcolm is like a gazelle, Malcolm Bendall, the inventor. He, you know, boing, boing, boing. You know, there is no telling where that man could pop up. And I tell you, I to Central or South America, and I went over to India to see his demonstration there. Had a good time, but I'd like to stay a little bit closer to home and see a, a, a new to India was, it was, it was kind of a hassle. It was a long way. And, and we were kind of in a strange land over there, but they treated us incredibly hospitably. And I know people in Central and South America are just as open-minded as you find around the world. Just in it. And maybe we'll pop up there, man. Do you have any interest? You're gonna be able to make the Cosmic Summit or are you virtual?
No, I'm, I'm, I've already got the ticket. I'm, I'm ready to go, so. Yeah.
Look forward to welcome.
Yeah, thank you, likewise.
Well, we'll sit you down with Malcolm Bendall and he will say, I mean, you do not have to drag it out of and we're gonna test this damn machine, you know? Everybody's like, George, you've fallen in with this man. Who knows whether it's true? I'm like, no, I hadn't. What we're doing with Malcolm the bottom of it, because if you're gonna talk about the literal truth of some of this stuff being possible and then people come up with machines that they say demonstrate these, Malcolm credits the ancients completely with discovery of this. He, he, he considers himself a rediscoverer rather than an right? And he believes that these setups are relatively simple. Of course, we build the entire machine for fourteen hundred bucks. And now, of course, parts and whatnot, but it is, it's not beyond belief at all, and Bob Greenyear could give some help here, that, that this kind of technology could have been exploited with a kind of technological pyramid that we have today, that we could have gone a different direction, lost it. Any other questions that we got pending that you see? A Bob to hold forth a little bit, and we, well, people, remember, you can get that ticket for four thirty-two if you use that code as a promo discount. Hate to be pitch this stuff. Anybody else out there, Beckett? And then.
Yeah, well.
But maybe we'll wrap it up if we don't have many questions.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a question about the poster presentations and the poster presentation hall. They, people in the chat want to learn a little bit more about that.
Yeah. Know what posters are, right? That's a big part of the world of academia, right? And when they have a conference, and a lot of times academic conferences will be relatively short but those are a step up from most of the participants in a is it fair to say, Randy? Most of them bring a poster.
Right, right.
Like, I, I went to AGU, the American Geophysical Union's big gathering a couple of times with a comet research group, and the hall of posters was the size of a football field. I mean, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of researchers who bring their poster, and even on the plane flying out there, everybody had like a little round, you know, where they were taking their posters with them. Exactly. And I think that's a good idea. I like having a level where, yeah, you can't, we don't have the bandwidth. But everybody's idea should be heard. If there's, you know, some, you know, editorial thinning, you know, if it seems ridiculous or it has a poor visual appeal, maybe it doesn't play. But, but everybody should have their say. And I've already received some interest. We've got a lot of interest in exhibitors and volunteers. We opened up those two pages on, on the Cosmic Summit webpage too, where apply to be a visitor or apply to be a volunteer. And we also opened up posters, so you can go send us your poster in the, that sub-page of the and we will evaluate it. And unless it's just, you know, totally abhorrent, we're gonna hang it up there. and we will evaluate it and unless it's just, you know, totally abhorrent, we're gonna hang it up there and you don't have to come to the summit either. And here's the best part, if we have um submissions, we're gonna take three of those people and if they can got a complimentary pass and we'll have them up on the stage for twenty minutes to share what their new idea is. And I know there are a lot of people out there. I hear from them on a weekly basis and have for, you know, almost two days. You have a lot of people probably approach you from time to time, don't they, with kind of different kind of.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Uh, over the years, yeah, conferences, um, posters are, 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 have become a bigger component in conferences in the last ten years. I mean, I, 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 I can, I go back to where posters, pre-posters, right? And so uh, that's, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So posters, um, I tell you, the one, I've done both, but conferences have the formal papers where you get up, read your paper, you got twenty minutes, you read your paper and in a group and then you sit down and then um, uh, another person reads their, you know, in these symposiums, not unlike what uh, you're gonna do at the Cosmic Summit, but um, but the one advantage I found in posters is that like you say, they're, they're set up on these poster boards, there's a line of them in various sized rooms, as big as football field, like you said, in, in the bigger ones, but um, the advantage for that is that usually the poster presenter stands there next to poster and people come by and you get these one-on-one conversations, you know, generated from the poster that you don't often get in the more formal paper presentations, right? And so uh, so and the posters stay up for, I don't know, two or three hours. There's a revolving time period depending on the, the number of posters, right? And so they're up for two or three hours and over that two, three hours, you can have dozens and dozens of people come by and uh, you know, seek out your poster and ask questions and it's a, it's a very um, like I said, more one-on, more intimate one-on-one kind of conversations that sometimes you don't find in the paper uh, presentations.
That's awesome, Randy. That's exactly the kind of thing that we already, maybe it doesn't really take off till next year. We didn't open up that page till a couple of weeks ago. But if um, if we get some good submissions, man, you're gonna come to the Cosmic Summit, whether you're there physically or not, we're gonna hang your poster up. So encourage anybody that's uh, private research, if you're a pajama scientist like I am and that you think needs to be aired and have tried your hardest to put it on Facebook and hadn't got the attention that you deserve, send it to us and you'll have later see that poster and, and the people around the world that are most interested. Um, Beckett, we got any more questions? I was gonna turn it over to Bob for just a minute. Um, talk about his live stream, this could be coming on in an hour or two, if, if we're done.
No, no more questions right now. Well, let me, let me double check in here, what's the flow? Oh, we do have one question about the thunderstorm generator. It came in about twenty minutes ago. Um, if we, do we wanna answer some more thunderstorm generator questions?
Heavy on that stuff, but let, let's do it. Bob will take it.
So does the thunderstorm generator need to be connected directly to the generator exhaust at present? And then he says, I have an eighteen inch stainless steel flex Y connecting from exhaust to stainless steel thunderstorm generator.
I would argue yes, because you wanna maximize the level of charge separation coming into the uh top of the thunderstorm generator and get it going into that multi uh, uh, dimensional uh extreme hydrodynamic shear. And then you wanna maximize the uh temperature transfer from the incoming highly moist and uh, uh water and trained uh air that's coming in through the bubbler in order to flash the steam to do the uh, uh eighteen hundreds Armstrong electrostatic boiler effect to create charge separation in the counter rotating vortex. And when that flashes to steam, it's gonna punch down on the top of the bubbler in that part of the stroke and that's going to put very high pressured, charged separated hydrogen oxygen along with the nitrogen oxygen from the air into the combustion chamber, which increases its efficiency. And then um, because you've got the vortex spinning one way with charge and sport vortex spinning the other way with charge, it arranges the, the, the positive, the negative charges respectively. And so you end up with a, a really interesting electrodynamic system. Um, that leads to the production of these ball lightning like analog structures that form these iron-rich crenulated spheres. So you need to maximize, and so what's happened is with the learning that's had over the last couple of months, the, the thunderstorm generator itself has become a lot shorter to maximize this heat transfer, charge separation type aspects. Uh, and there's a group that's looking to do a replication in uh, um, the Scandinavian countries, a collection of uh retired professors and so forth. And um, they are looking to, they, they had this, they sent a diagram through and they had a very long pipe coming out of um, the, the engine and I said that, that is not gonna fly. Um, uh, so, you know, that's what you have to do. You have to get it as close as possible. And maximize the heat transfer and the, the, the dueling vortexes as, as Malcolm would say um, uh, in the system. So does that answer the uh, the person's question?
Yeah, yeah, that was a question from Jim Walker there. So
Thank you, Jim.
If, if you got more, drop it in the chat. We just got a question from Gabriel, I believe, uh, what is it? Gabriel Felbaum and he asks, are there going to be thunderstorm generators available for sale?
Uh, no, um, flat, flat out, no. Uh, uh, as, as I've just described, the, the, the the structure itself is changing quite a lot. Um, the, the, the principles of two counter uh, uh, rotating vortices uh with, with charge separation materials is not changing. Um, but the, the, the form has changed a little bit, so um, uh, it's, it's really a, a prototype in development. And uh, you know, I, I didn't wanna get involved, but unfortunately I saw these plasmoid things coming out of a, a previous experiment. And so I, I, I'd seen them in our experiments and I kind of understand what they were, so I was forced to get involved because I thought, oh god, this is another ball lightning technologies, ultimately, I'm gonna see an iron-rich crenulated microspheres. And uh, uh, he, he nearly gave me an out uh by saying, I don't wanna chop up my my big twenty-four inch sphere. I said, well, good, I don't have to do any more work on this subject. And because as a volunteer, you know, you don't get paid, so like, uh, and, and then he, he, he relented and gave me some, some examples, so um.
While Bob's frozen there, I'll point out that, that Bob came into this open-minded skeptic. I mean, he wasn't on team Malcolm or or generator or plasmoids, right? I mean, this thing just came across your related concepts for a decade or more.
Yeah.
Do you just, you're, you, you, you had to believe your own line of eyes, right?
Well, no, it was a matter of, I see this thing, therefore it is what's going on. And I, I guess I have to walk through the motions of proving it for Malcolm and so he understands. And uh, so we're, we're in a situation now where it's a science, it's repeatable. Now, the question is, um, does it cause uh stepwise nuclear transmutation? And I think in about one hour, I will start a stream on uh the MFMP's YouTube channel and I will reveal the carbon dating. Now, um, the, the, the issue here is uh, we are using a fossil fuel and that has no no carbon fourteen in it, right? And so what I'm about to share may, may actually change huge areas of science. And that also will happen tomorrow. Um, and people are gonna have to confront a new reality. Potentially.
That is sexy stuff. Okay, let's start winding it up. Let me ask, hey, Randall, you're going on a number of podcasts here in the next few weeks, correct? Could you tell us?
Yeah, I thought I'd jump on a few. I've got some invitations, so I thought would be a good opportunity to promote the summit.
Who are you joining? I know you were just on Sean Ryan, which is a fantastic show, yeah.
Uh, well, let me see, I'm gonna have to go through, I've got a list about six or seven invitations here. Um, I'm gonna have to go through.
Uh, if you don't have them handy, that's fine, but uh, you're gonna be all over the place between now and June, man, and we look forward to seeing you.
Yeah, good, all right. Well, hopefully we can fill up some seats.
Yeah, man. And Bob, you are gonna be premiering here in about an hour at the Martin Fleischman Memorial Project? People need to go there.
Hour if I can get everything plugged in, yes. So uh, the, the stream's up there, so you can go and wait. Uh, uh, it's waiting for, to go live in about an hour. It might be a little bit delayed.
Schatkin, you wanna tell us uh where you can get your book and tell us about, just briefly about your other book? You have two books that are both.
Well, I, I, I've, I've video, cause when I looked at it on YouTube, I was just a smudge. I'll turn it back on here for whatever good that does, but the, the two books are The Boy Who Invented Television, which is the biography of Philo T. Farnsworth, who was fourteen years old when he figured out how to bounce electrons back and forth in a vacuum tube, so you could all look at each other today. Every video screen on the planet comes from a started with a sketch that he drew in nineteen twenty. And the other is The Man Who Mastered Gravity, the biography, the, the biography of a man whose story cannot be told, T. Townsend Brown, who lived a life uh, in the shadows of modern science and they're both available on Amazon.
Uh, and I highly recommend them. I mean, somebody had to do this work out there and nobody put it all together. This stuff was in the realm of myth, scientific myth and, and Paul has added a lot of meat to the bone on those two gentlemen. Hey, Randy, what are you researching right now? And you said you're preparing some things that um, that you uh might talk about um first at the Cosmic Summit. What kind of?
Right, is uh, yeah, it's the, basically my presentation, um, these uh three hundred and seventy-five um artifacts that I've been collecting data on for the past several decades and I'm co-authoring this with Chris Moore and Al Goodyear, uh, a couple other uh colleagues. And so in fact, I just yesterday sent a, a first draft to them for some comments and I'll continue working on that, hopefully get that published. Um, hopefully get it really finished by, I'd say the in the summer and then get it out, out for publication um for review.
Okay, but you'll give us a preview at the summit?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, first time.
Fantastic, man. Uh, Mark Young, we look forward to seeing you, man. Okay, it's a long way to come from Australia. We appreciate you doing it, buddy. Thanks for joining.
I hope I can make it.
I, I, I know that it might be in question, man, but um, I hope you can make it too. Meeting you in person after being friends for many years was was quite a pleasure and I'd love to see you in the flesh again, man. So um, we'll keep our fingers crossed. And Bob, again, one more time, in about an hour, you're coming on to our favorite platform, YouTube, who actually, we've been blowing it out lately, I should mention that, along with mentioning, go and buy a ticket right now for four hundred and thirty-two dollars using the promo code four thirty-two, but.
We also have our giveaways starting now.
Yeah, yeah, oh yes. And we will give away, how do we operate that, Beckett? We're gonna give away a free pass, excuse me.
Drop Megafauna in the chat on YouTube while we finish up this live stream and we're gonna pick somebody from the chat on YouTube. I see Nick Moore just dropped a comment, looks like he wants another one of those tickets.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Drop them in the chat and then we'll pick a winner at the end and we'll reach out to you.
Okay, we're getting close to then, so drop them in quick now. And if it comes in after the, you know, if we don't have sufficient to make it competitive, maybe we can do it a little bit later, I don't know. Um, who else we got? Miss Steph, if y'all have any kind of technical questions or have any trouble getting tickets or confused about any of the purchasing stuff or um even um hotel arrangements, et cetera, um, you can get in touch with Steph at Team at Cosmic Summit or Support at Cos- Summit. Uh, Beckett, me and Steph check that all the time. We'll have another one of these town halls, we'll have one more, or actually two more, one right before the summit, but we're gonna have another in May. Forget that exact date, I should have but do you, Steph? If you could look.
It is.
Sorry about that.
We have another one in April and it's actually on the twentieth of April.
Yep.
So we got one in April and then we got one in May as well and then one at the beginning of June. So we're gonna be doing these monthly and we hope to make them more engaging and have more exciting stuff and announcements every single time for you.
Sure do. Um, so again, one more time, we'll leave it open for about another thirty minutes for uh reduced price tickets at four thirty-two, just use that code, four thirty-two. Yeah. Yeah, and we got Robert Shock coming, big news. Covering our subject in excruciating and wonderfully written detail. Uh, what'd we get last night? New, new subscribers on the YouTube's? Two hundred or something? What was it, Beckett?
Yeah, we had two hundred subscribers last night from YouTube. We've grown a lot over the last seven days. It's been about a thousand new subscribers, so thank you to everybody who subscribed to us.
Yeah, and presumably they'll have a chance at watching this video and get those tickets for four hundred and eighty-five bucks. You missed the live opportunity, but we'll probably open that back up next time and do it again. Uh, some type of discount and you can also we've got Grimerica is gonna be uh promoting the Cosmic as well as Earth Ancients and Mr. Cliff Dunning, who we had a wonderful, the longtime host of the podcast, Earth Ancients. And uh, Cliff is a summit and will be uh promoting it as well and offering a disc.
Uh, George, that's actually Cliff's podcast is one of the invitations I've got, so that's probably gonna happen pretty soon. Yeah, so I thought we'd probably end up spending a better part of the interview talking Cosmic Summit related things.
Ah, that's awesome, man. That makes my heart sing. I love it, buddy. Do we have a name in, kind of name?
Say that again?
Can, can you, dude, can we pick somebody from the Megafauna thing? I don't wanna have to like hold everybody on here while we collect names. I should have mentioned it earlier. I should have mentioned it right off the bat, I guess, huh?
Let's give it, let's give it another uh sixty seconds and while we're doing that, I mean, tell, tell the people what we, we want from them, George. We, we, we want some, some help promoting this.
Uh, you just can't stress it enough and there've been some really good friends of the summit who've done this and, and probably surly people who are willing, but just hadn't made the leap now, but you know, just like everybody these days, we need likes and shares and subscriptions and reposts. Um, we've got, I've got about some followers on Twitter and about a little bit more than a thousand on the Cosmic Summit page. But I'm posting at the Summit page all the time and if anything that you could repost from that brings, you know, that much more attention to the thing, you, the multiplier effect, there is no way that the three of us or three of us plus the speakers can create the buzz necessary. It has to kind of come organically from the bottom and it's, we got a lot of good fans out there, but we could use more. So the more that you can like, subscribe, share, tell your friends and remember, you probably, if you're into these subjects, have driven your fam- and people are tired of hearing about your weird thoughts, that everybody and your, your, your uh weird education in this field, it's not weird, first of all. The New York Times stated, it's not weird. This is a legitimate field of inquiry, it is very controversial and y'all are on the vanguard of it. This is the most important thing that ever happened. So if you come to the summit, everybody in the room is your ally in this. They will not be rolling their eyes, they can't hear you talk about it enough. Bringing up the black mat at the bar or over lunch is not considered rude or uh imposing your, 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 your strange uh studies. It is what the summit's all about, is to come with like-minded people, get in the same room, get at the same party, go to the same bar, have lunch and dinner together. We've got two lunches and a dinner, it's all at seated tables that um, we're all round tables. I was a little bit concerned, people thought we were sitting theater style, we're not, it's gonna be just like last year. You'll meet everybody at your table and if you're, you'll be sitting with the speakers. Um, y'all have been very patient on this podcast, thank you very much.
Hey, George, just one note before we go.
Yeah. Yeah, Sean.
Um, yeah, uh, a, a, a podcast uh um promotion here. I'm gonna be appearing in a few weeks on a podcast called Thing Crazy.
Oh, really? That sounds like.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think that will be a great place for me to promote the Cosmic Summit because as you we're all dealing out here on the fringe where people think we're crazy, so I will encourage everybody whose family thinks they're crazy to come to the Cosmic Summit.
Hell, yes. Thank you, Paul. I could get you an affiliate link if you haven't got one already. You can drop it down at the bottom of that podcast, ask them to put that in there and see if if we can bring some more people to Greensboro with it, man. Thank you very much.
Keep that in mind before I get there, yeah. Right.
Beckett.
War man checking out.
We do, we do have a name, yeah. Drumroll, please. We have a winner of the Megafauna Pass and the winner is, according to Mr. Trent Wilson, who's randomly picked this. And the winner is, according to Mr. Trent Wilson, who's randomly picked this, The Daily Outside. The Daily Outside is the winner, so, the Daily Outside. Go ahead and drop your email in the chat if you feel comfortable with that, or if not, send us a message on Instagram or send us an email at support@cosmicsummit, and we'll get you your in-person Megafauna Pass. Congratulations. Hope to see you in June. Okay.
Terrific. Okay, folks, that, I appreciate everybody's participation and your enthusiasm for June, it's going to be a fantastic event. And, uh, we're on the cutting edge of the most important things that humans can pat yourself on the back. I love everybody, and I look forward to seeing you in June. Bye-bye.
So long, everyone.
Goodbye, everyone.
See ya.